Call this, oh, call this meeting of the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees to order. We do have a quorum. The meeting has been duly called and the notice of the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required. Thanks, everybody, for coming out today. We do have public participation. Gina, do we have anybody signed up? We do not. Okay. Well, we'll move on to our continuous improvement in student outcomes. We do have an athletic update. Greg Priest, our athletic director.
Coming up, Coach. Per the board monitoring calendar, we do a lot of continuous improvement student outcome reports throughout the year, and we do a mid-year and a final year report from athletics, competitive academics, and VPA because those are important to our community. Coach Priest, provide your update to the board, please.
[inaudible] Got a few slides here, but, you know, I think getting through this past year, very challenging year, but at the same time, we had a lot of success this year. And with it being a challenging year, I mean, it was challenging for everybody, from hall parts, from every part of school. But, you know, but I do want, I think, our trainers, our athletes, our coaches, Rachel Warber, everybody did a great job of making sure that our student athletes were able to have, and would be able to make it through there. We did have some, there were some, we did have a few hiccups along the way, but I think we, we did a great job of managing it, and I don't think, you know, we did a lot better than a lot of the other districts out there. And so I appreciate Dr. Crawford, the board, and just all the protocols that you guys put in place, and we, just us being able to do that and being able to have a, have a successful season. We had nine district championships this year. Just going to kind of run through there real quick and let you see those. You know, tennis did a great job again, but Legacy had eight district championships. Tyler High had one, which was team tennis. Coach Canionis over there, he's done a fabulous job. We had Charlie Sizemore, who started the program and kind of got it going and gotten that thing going on, on, on the right track and got a lot of kids involved. And then Coach Alex, he came in and he's continued to just improve that, that program over there. So they just did a really good job. And so, you know, like I said, with it being a COVID year, eight district championships at Legacy and one at Tyler High, it's pretty good, pretty good improvement on what we have. As far as state playoffs, team tennis, regional semifinalists, basketball teams did a good job. And then we had our, Legacy had their first playoff win in 11 years. So that was a big improvement there. Regional qualifiers, we continue to do well in cross-country. Golf, both teams made the playoffs. And then we had a lot of good representation down at the state swim meet where ten, where swimming finished 27th in the UIL State Meet. And then you had Fields, who, who did really well in the 100, in the 100 butterfly and the 200, 200 freestyle. Tyler High, as far as by district qualifiers, had soccer, tennis, and volleyball that made, made the, made the playoffs. As far as Lone Star Cup, Tyler Legacy, 39 points, tied for 50th. That's been our best finish that, that we've had since I've been here. And so that was at Legacy. And then Tyler High had six points, which was 208. And then you can see their points for each, how the points break down. So overall, for Legacy, a very good, a very good year, being at 50th. Tyler High, we've, we've definitely, and I think COVID really affected them this year in a lot of sports. A lot of people did online, and then a lot of people, our numbers were down in a lot of sports. So, so I think we will have a big bounce back this year. So, so I look for those numbers to definitely improve. As far as college signees, we had 27 student athletes that signed to go on to play at the next level, 20 from Legacy and seven from Tyler High. So I listed those, those, but, you know, from baseball, basketball, had a great representation of all, pretty much all sports, being able to move on to the next level. A lot of kids going division, you know, Division One, you know, Arizona, Houston. So, so I think overall, pretty pleased with how, how we were able to get our kids going on to the next level. And then that, that kind of wraps up that part of it, but it's here. The, the new season is here. Volleyball, tennis, all those sports, freshman football, they all started this past Monday. So it is, now it is, is, we're ready to go. And, and just being able to see the new facilities, I think, we are really excited. I know our coaches are, I know our student athletes are, you know, from the indoor to the new gyms, the new, the new fields over at Legacy. I know we've got some fields that are, that are a little bit behind over at Tyler High that were waiting, but it's going to be an exciting year. I know these kids are, you know, everybody's looking forward to using these things. Tennis is going to get their, is, you know, they've been able to practice on their courts, but they're actually starting a match right now against White House today. So being able to have that first home match, they practice under the lights, so that, that, the kids were excited, you know, and at both places, we had weather on the first day, on August 2nd, first day of football, we had weather and lightning and kids were able to go in the indoors, and so we didn't have to, to miss out on those. And so, so it's exciting times to be in Tyler ISD. Volleyball is starting next week with their tournament. You've got, we've got six gyms that we can do, so, at the high schools, so not being able, not having to go to the middle schools anymore to play those matches. And so that, that's going to be fun, and I think being able to host, being able, that the facilities will give us the ability to, to host basketball tournaments, everything now. So, so it, it's, it's, it's going to be fun. And football, varsity starts next week on the 9th. Our first home games are going to be against Tyler High and Legacy on September 3rd. So that's going to be a good game. We'll be back at 100%. So looking forward to having everybody back in the stands and cheering on the Red Raiders and the Lions. But everything is starting up. We got cross-country, tennis, volleyball, and football. So they're kicking and going now, and so it's, like I said, it's exciting times. So as far as that, just, that is the fall, fall update for athletics, and if anybody has any questions, feel free to ask.
Okay. Thank you, Coach Priest. Does anybody have any questions?
Just had a concern, being in the northern area of the district and Tyler High area, there's been concern about, well, I guess the best question would be, how would you explain the difference in the athletic ability between Legacy and Tyler High as far as school and overall?
As far as athletic ability?
Right. I don't know if it's athletic ability. The concern is that athletes have gone from Tyler High to Legacy in regards to that, and there've been a lot of controversy about that, especially with them not winning as much athletics as Legacy.
Well, I think we have, I think as far as athletic ability, there's, they have, I mean, you walk down, you walk over those athletic fields and there's athletes on both sides of town. The talent, we for sure have the talent. As far as the numbers, you know, participation numbers have been a concern, and it's been a concern for several years, and we're trying to do everything we can to get the numbers up on the north side of town. And, and that starts in the middle school, you know, especially with middle school football. It, it is a struggle. It, it has been a struggle to, to try to get those kids to come out and participate. So, you know, we've really made a push to try to get, you know, making sure our high school coaches are down in the middle school during the athletic periods, and trying to recruit those kids. But, but we just, we, we are putting a huge emphasis on just making sure that we, we do a great job of coaching these kids and, and, and trying to get these kids and making it fun for them and making it to where they want to come out. But that, you know, the, the numbers, yeah, I mean, I think from everything that we're doing, from the youth basketball leagues to those things, I mean, those are going to help us and make it to where those kids are hopefully coming out. And then it's the retention part of it. So making sure that they, you know, that they have a great experience in middle school, and then when they get to ninth grade, that they continue to stay with it. You know, we had, I think, the first day of football for ninth grade over at Tyler High, I think we had 23 kids out. And I don't, but we've got it projected at about 70. So it's hard to get some, for, it, we have, we've got to continue, and those kids will keep coming. And a lot of those kids, I mean, they'll have 25 kids that'll show up the first day at school and just say, well, I didn't know anything, you know, I didn't know that football started. And, and, but they know. And so, you know, hopefully, we can continue to, we'll continue to improve on that and get those kids out and get them here earlier. But a lot of them, for whatever reason, they decide, you know, it's, it's hot outside and, you know, they don't want to come out here yet, and, and so they start showing up. But, but as the week has gone by, we've continued to get more and more kids. I think we're up to about, you know, close to 40 now by the end of the week. And so we're trying to, we, we've done everything we've, we could do to try to get kids out by offering physicals, to offer, you know, doing different things that will keep kids out. But hopefully, that answers some of your question.
Okay.
If, but, but that's kind of where we are, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Just a quick follow-up. One part of his question, does, does Legacy have anything to do with Tyler High as far as one versus the other? Do they, does, does Legacy, I mean, what does Legacy have to do with Tyler High's numbers?
Nothing. I don't think, uh...
Or their ability to compete?
As far as, or their ability to compete? Uh, no, I mean, I mean, I don't think that, you know, the one thing that we have done, I mean, and, and this was before we were here, where when a team had success, that people tried to go to the other side of town or go to that school. And, and we've done a good job, and, you know, I, we can't go back and, and fix what was created, what happened in the past. We can only do what happens now. So your zone, where your zone to go to school is where you go. And so, and, and I think you guys helping approve that back several years ago, probably about six years ago, we don't have a lot of crossover where kids are trying to go from one school to the next. So, yeah, I mean, I think we've done a very good job of holding people to that, and where your zone to go to school is where you go.
Thank you.
I'll add, I think the mantra, tradition will get you beat, our community's got to get over that. I think a lot of the old thinking was that only African-American or Hispanics lived on the north side of town and, or only went to certain schools. And we've proven that data time and time again. The federal government approved it when the DSA order was lifted, that our schools are integrated, and our towns integrate. And so it's not like this, this one thing that automatically happened overnight. Our, our town has evolved to where the community is integrated. And you have a chance to live either in the north side of town or the south side of town, the east side of town or the west side of town. There's affordable opportunities everywhere. And so I think it's a choice of where you attend school. You can make that happen if you desire to go to that, 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 that school. But I'll say something else. Greg talked about prior to his arrival as athletic director, my arrival as superintendent, we try to do things right, use the systems that the University Interscholastic League has in place as far as transfers goes, as far as eligibility goes. I cannot say that that was done with 100% fidelity prior to. And that includes recruiting, that includes going to school your zone, that includes using the correct addresses. In other words, you live where you say you live. Other school systems across the state that have been successful have been able to abide by those rules and be successful. It's taken advantage of the resources that y'all have approved for us to deploy out, coaches getting down to the middle schools, we pay well as far as stipends go for our coaching staffs. It's, it's, it's about the integrity of coaching staffs doing right and doing well. So I think at Legacy, you'll see that Coach Willis and his staff, that he's put together, he knows how to do it, he's a state championship coach, and he's hired well. At Tyler High, Coach Holmes has been to the state semifinals twice?
Three times.
Three times? And so we've got good coaching staffs on both sides of town. If they take advantage of the resources that have been given to them, I think that they both could be successful. And back when we were in the same classification, our dream was to one day play in the regional semifinal game at Rose Stadium against each other. But they're not in the same classification right now. So we certainly want to provide every opportunity within our means that are, that's ethical for our students to be successful and our coaching staff to be successful. So I know there's that perception out there, but I think that a lot of that is residual from the old days to where this was a split city, a split community, that maybe it wasn't quite as accessible for living arrangements on either side of town, or the perception that one school was favored over the other. I don't see that. And I see that with the, the, the opportunities and facilities that both sides of town have now, you've got to take advantage of them, and that's what happens from time to time. So that's just my perception, is of trying to do things within the UIL rules that we possibly can. Win with integrity.
We don't have the majority to minority, or minority, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of transfers that were provided either through the, the old desegregation order, or at one time, you had AYP, academic, adequate yearly progress. There's a blast from the past that's over, gosh, whenever I was a high school principal, nearly 16 or 17, 18 years ago, to where you can do a lot of transferring as well. Some of those things are not in place that maybe we're taking advantage of during those times to balance out one school over the other in regard to athletes. So again, I'll go back to this, if you want to go to a certain school, you, you can find a way to, to, to live in that attendance zone. And Tyler's a pretty good place now. I don't know what it was like before, but I suspect that it's, it's, the opportunities are there for everybody and anyone to live anywhere in this town that they want to live in.
Any other questions for Coach Priest? Appreciate your report.
Thank you, guys. We're, we're looking forward to exciting years. Hopefully, we'll get all your stuff out, and we'll see you at a lot of athletic events this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Coach. Okay. Now we have a competitive academics update.
Gary Brown, Executive Director of College and Career. One thing that we've, we pride ourselves on, if we're going to do it, we might as well compete to be the best at it. And I think we had a pretty good year last year as far as competitive academics goes. And so Gary's going to give you a preview of everything that we did K through 12, because it does start in elementary school. Mr. Brown?
Starting, starting as board members, Dr. Crawford, I appreciate the opportunity to share some summary results from this past school year. And I would begin by saying a similar, and we'll go back through the whole thing with what Greg said, Priest, that it was a challenging year. And so the fall semester for advanced academics and competitive academics, the after-school, before-school practices and things are not classes for UIL academics, they're not, are the CTSOs. So there were some challenges. Very proud of our teachers and our sponsors, that they really maintained status quo all through the fall to get our kids ready to then compete in the spring. And we really did have some successes once we got to that spring season. The elementary schools in the past have had two elementary academic meets hosted onsite at one of the two elementary, two elementary campuses, and then they would have a citywide meet where they would bring those top competitors together. This year, the decision was made to have a single meet, just logistically to have that one meet. It was held at the Career and Technology Center at the end of March, and had several hundred elementary student participants in that. Along with that, the decision was made, while they did award places for second, third, medals and ribbons, they did not distinguish campus places. And the principals got together and just said, for this year, to make sure students continue to compete, and there's no stress on that, they're not. So I don't have any campus results to share with you as far as elementary's concerned. The middle school, however, they did make the decision to kind of move forward in the way that they have in the past. So more middle school at the end of February, the last Saturday in February hosted the academic meet, had students from all five middle schools, actually, six middle schools because Caldwell, always have to remember Caldwell, were competing. And Three Lakes Middle School finished in third place cumulatively. Belter Middle School students finished in second, which was a nice increase from the previous year for Belter. And then more of the host school actually competed in place first overall, when you added all the scores up for the middle schools. The high schools going into the, and all year long, this was a week-by-week, month-by-month proposition, because the UIL was changing basically how they wanted to do the UIL academic meets. So originally, it was, it was going to be virtual, and then they made a big push to try to get back face-to-face and in-person. Then they left it up to the individual UIL academic districts to meet and decide. And honestly, it changed throughout the year. And ultimately, the 6A competitions were all held virtually, all the way through to the state competition. So, and I think that has a lot to do with the 6A schools predominantly being in the urban areas. So a lot of those schools were not able to come together face-to-face. 5A and below competed in person for the most part. So our 5A at Tyler High School and our 3A early college high school actually held face-to-face in-person meets. Some of the results, 10 6A, Tyler Legacy High School had an outstanding academic year in competing. They were actually the academic meet champions as they competed against the Rockwall Schools, the Mesquite Schools, had a very successful year, and specifically in speech and debate. They were the cross-examination debate champions, the LD Lincoln Douglas Debate Champions, and the overall speech champions in that competition, which enabled many of these students then to advance to the regional competition, ordinarily would have been held at Baylor University in Waco, was held virtually, and then had a number of these students then advanced to the state competition, once again, virtually. I will say this, that the 5A meets were held in Lufkin and Acadutius, in 3A in Regional, in Seaford Austin University. They did not have students at the 3A or 5A level that advanced to the state competition. But the students that were going through now actually did advance, and some of them placed, and placed very high at the state meet. So the 6A meet results, Olivia Orin placed second in the state in state congress debate. We had Lala Katz place sixth in, in congress debate, and in tenth place, Kaisir Yassan placed 10th. So three of the top 10 places in this UIL academic event statewide in 6A were held by Legacy students. That's pretty phenomenal. And then competing at state in persuasive speaking, Kaisir Yassan, you see her again there, and then Luke Pearson qualified and competed at the state competition in pros. Then moving on, several of these students had an opportunity to compete even beyond the state level, at the national level, through the National Forensic League, and had some successes as well. Colton Edelman, and these are Legacy High School students, extemporaneous speaking at the national contest. Kaisir Yassan, again, advanced beyond state and competed at the national level in extemporaneous speaking. Olivia Orin competed in congressional debate, and she also competed, I don't have it on a slide up here, she was invited to participate in the Coolidge Cup, which is an extremely prestigious speech and debate meet that's held in Plymouth, Vermont every summer. So she competed and finished fourth in the nation in that competition, which is phenomenal. And then LD debate, Lala Katz competed at the national level. I will say before we move on from that, that we also had the opportunity, the CTC hosted the state academic meet. It was one of the regional hubs for 1A through 5A academic meets. We did that back in, in, I think it was on May 1st, so it was actually the state competition. So moving over, I've just got a few slides here. These are the other side of the competitive academics and competitions, the current technical student organizations that we have, primarily associated with the Career and Technical Education Program. Our Future Business Leaders of America, FBLA, these students had an opportunity to compete. This was done virtually, I'll tell you that. In public speaking, we had a student placed fourth in the state, that was Francisco Lozano. In job interview in FBLA, we had a student placed fourth in the state, and that was Cameron Ross, and that their sponsor, Ms. Charmisia Jackson, is in this photograph as well. These students are from Tyler High School that finished in the state.
Did he get the job?
Did, yes. Skills USA is our largest CTSO, and before the pandemic, kind of going back to that time, had hundreds of students competing in these competitions and kind of had that state competition pulled out from a year ago. But we, we did have another successful year. Unfortunately, it was virtual, and it's hard on, on the application of skills when you're cooking, and you're designing, and you're producing to do that. A lot of it's done through video and, and some, some live virtual competitions. But we did have one team in particular that not only advanced to the state competition, but actually finished second in the entire state in crime scene investigation. And this, this is really unique team, this is a neat group of young ladies here. So Dana Zavala on the left there, she is a Tyler High School student. Kelly Garrity in the middle is a Tyler Legacy student, and then Brianna Crowe on the right is a Tyler High School student. So we had students from both schools competing on the same team, and they finished second in the state in crime scene investigation. The Technology Student Association, another large group that we have that, once again, was, was virtual competition. CNC Cam Laser Engraver, second in the state, and that's Jean Brigado from Tyler High School. CNC is computer numeric control, and the CAM is computer assisted manufacturing, just to ease your path acronym up there, but he finished second in the state in that competition. Electronic testing device, and this is the students actually have to produce and manufacture an electronic and testing device. It's not just a test, it's not, it's physically producing it. And that's Nicholas Gaffney from Tyler Legacy, and he finished first in the state in this competition, holding his medal there. And then two different competitions, the action photography and montage photography, that Samuel Lake from Legacy High School, and he got a gold medal and a silver medal in these two competitions. Just a quick look ahead, the fall semester, as I mentioned previously, is really kind of the prep work that goes into the spring academic and CTSO season. Once we get to January, we're hoping to resume the Tyler ISD robotics competitions. This past year, we did some showcases, but not a true campus against campus, student against student competition. Hunter McConnell in the district coordinates this, but we're hoping to add to high school this year. That's the plan and the goals. We'll have early, elementary school students, middle school students, and high school students competing against each other in robotics. Then when we get to January, February, that's when the preliminary CTSO events occur, as well as the, the UIL academic competitions begin. So we have the area elementary and then the middle school meet that'll occur at that time. We don't advance students at the elementary and middle school beyond just the local competitions, but once the high school district meets are held in March, they do have the opportunity then to move on during the month of April to the regional competitions and then qualify for state. So that occurs in April. And then April and May are the state competitions for CTSOs, and then in May, the UIL state academic contests, which we hope will be back in Austin, and they'll have an opportunity to go back down there to the University of Texas and go back. Some of it's held in Round Rock, some of it at the Capitol, but we hope to have that, that experience again. And then, of course, those that do advance to a national competition that occurs in the summer.
Did they host at another location this year? I know they were talking about it.
They were going to host at Laverneia ISD, but that got moved virtual. That was that thing that kept going back and forth.
Okay. So I was going to say was, Ted Gummit, bless her heart, we usually go to Austin, and Laverneia raised their hand up and said, hey, we'll do it. The memory of going to compete in state at Laverneia. Good people in Laverneia, but a little different than Austin in doing it at the Capitol and UT. So I'm glad they did it virtual and didn't, didn't spend our district taxpayer dollars to go to Laverneia, so.
We hope to be back in person at all levels, the 3A, the 5A.
Absolutely. There's something about being able to compete in the, at the Capitol.
And that is my presentation. If there are any questions or comments, I'll be glad to...
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Mr. Brown? Those are some impressive results, some impressive kids. I love the fact that our kids get to compete in modern subjects, you know, and I just, it goes back to our facilities and the opportunities that the taxpayers have allowed us, and successful student outcomes is back there on the wall, and that's what we focus on. And these facilities, I hope people realize, give these kids opportunities to be successful in a lot of different things. I mean, it doesn't feel like that long ago, but I know in 1999, we didn't have all the, all of these opportunities, and I feel like it's kind of been this revolution of facilities that allow our kids to go win state in robotics, you know, and stuff like that. So, well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Visual and Performing Arts.
Director of Visual Performing Arts, Sandra Newton, will now provide the end-of-year update. I think she's got some good stuff for you guys.
Good afternoon or morning. I'm kind of in the middle somewhere to the board and to Dr. Crawford. Thank you for allowing me to give this update. I want to echo what the other updates said. I'm very proud of our programs and our directors and our students for making things happen in this crazy year we just had. We did indeed adapt and deliver this academic year. Teachers found a way to give students opportunities, whether it was reorganizing a music lab or showing artwork in another way, or having their classes organized in a way so they were using different materials in a music class, or having an all-state trumpet player. You know, those are all great things to happen in a year like this. For the facilities, we are very thankful for our facilities. They allowed us to host and give our students opportunities they wouldn't normally have. We hosted the first-ever East Texas High School Honors Orchestra at the Tyler High School campus with a guest clinician from... with a guest clinician from Stephen F. Austin, and then Richard Lee came in and offered a co-performance for, with those kids that were selected as the East Texas Orchestra. We also hosted at Tyler High the Orchestra Concert and Sight Reading, which at that event, we were very proud to say that the Legacy Orchestra went full sweepstakes, straights, ones, all the way across, and the Caldwell Orchestra, straight sweepstakes, superior ratings. So, they're doing some great things in both of those programs. So, once you hit March, again, like advanced academics, a lot of the legwork goes in the fall semester. The spring's the time for celebrations. March is Youth Art Month in the state of Texas, and as a result, we have Big Art Day. We had, at Caldwell Arts Academy, they did a really unique thing where they took masks, the paper masks, and decorated the paper masks, and the paper masks were hung in the school. Super cool. There's no other word for that. Bonner did Crazy Hair Day. Everybody made these hearts. Jack had a Chahuli exhibit out in front of their school. The kids all made, they used plastic, not glass, Chahuli typically glass. And we were celebrated in Tyler Paper. We were very excited. And incidentally, many of our celebrations, because this is a state day, made it into the Texas Art Education Association's portfolio that was presented on the national level, because Tyler's doing such a great job in celebrating the visual arts, both on Big Art Day and Youth Art Month. Speaking of Youth Art Month, each district is allowed to submit so many pieces for consideration at the state Capitol for the Youth Art Month exhibit. The size of our district allows us to submit six pieces. Many districts didn't have any pieces selected. Even huge districts who could submit 12 pieces didn't have any selected. We had two, which really says a lot about our visual arts programs. Very proud of those teachers. So, the picture on the left is an image of the exhibit. Once it's at the state Capitol building, it moves to the Bog Bullock Building. So, that's the exhibit at the Bog Bullock Building. That was Ms. Hager, who had a piece from Caldwell, and a student from Legacy who had a piece that were selected for that exhibit. Of course, we had all of our UILs, again, so excited that we had ours in person. We did not have to go virtual for any of our UIL competitions, concert and sight reading, solo and ensemble. Our programs performed very well. A couple of the highlights, Bolter got superior rating for their varsity group, and for the first time ever, Tyler High School subnonvarsity group, excuse me, received superior rating. And that was exceptional, too, because they had a brand-new director in a COVID year who pulled that off. Of course, Legacy has a long legacy of superior ratings, and they did it again this year. Good for them. Tyler ISD hosts the Visual Arts UIL equivalent, which is art scholastic event. I direct the high school region seven. And then Junior Vase, Junior Visual Arts Classic Event, and then the Elementary, Texas Elementary Art Meet. Tyler ISD hosts all three. It went last minute, completely virtual. All the artwork had to be submitted in a digital format. The jurying happened online, and our teachers hopped to it. And I will say that most of the regions experienced a deficit or a loss in the number of entries, but Region Seven stayed right on. So, a lot of that is a testament to our teachers here in Tyler. After, the high school pieces can advance to a state event, which was also virtual this year. We had seven pieces advanced this year. When they advance to state base, they are readjudicated. They can reach a score up to a five. If you're a four, that's still a great. I mean, that's, to get a four at state, that's incredible. To get a five means you've medaled. There is no higher. Every single one of the pieces Tyler advanced to state, all medaled. Two of them came from Tyler High School, which has never happened before. The other five came from Legacy High School. Again, they have a long tradition of very high scores at both vases and state base. We were able to have some performances, made my heart smile. As a performer myself, you know, there's a certain feedback that you need from your crowd to make that happen. Caldwell Arts Academy had Lion King Kids and Lion King Junior. Tyler, Legacy High School did Footloose, one-act play over at Tyler High School. I have all the one-act plays. They were excellent, excellent. And Tyler hosted the middle school one-act play UIL competition, and that was at Tyler High School as well. That was excellent. There were some other really neat things that happened. Campuses took initiative to take care of, one of which was Legacy, or Three Lakes, did a band fair. They had food trucks, they had performances outside, they had, it was a great community experience. It was wonderful. The Legacy Choir was able to do their performances along with many other programs. And then, of course, the Brigadets and the Southern Bells were able to do on stages, these great showcases for their dance programs. We also had our 17th Annual High School Art Exhibit with the Tyler Museum of Art. They do Dia de los Muertos also in the spring. They're a great partner. They do a lot of things to really help the kids showcase their artwork. And how many kids get to say, I've had artwork in a museum? I mean, that looks really great on a resume. We had the Christmas car contest, the holiday car contest in December. And then we had, Caldwell had some really fantastic art exhibits as well, Dia de los Muertos along with some others. We were able to, this year, take a giant step out of our comfort zone, and we did a completely interactive art, virtual art museum. So, these are a couple screenshots from that experience. We had our community that jumped in, and they were a part of it, too. So, you could go in there, and you could click each one of those images of artwork, and you would have an opportunity to get a little bit closer to the piece. Then there was an option in there to click the art teacher's image, and you could learn more about your student's art teacher. You could go in and click any of the, you know, Tyler, excuse me, Texas Art Education Association, TMA, any of those items, UIL, and the parents could click and learn more about those things. We're hoping to do more. This is one of those perks that we learn as a result of all we've been through, you know, the silver lining. So, we're hoping to do more of these in a more specific way. Maybe artwork students work on as a result of visiting the Tyler Museum of Art, and it's a partnership with them. Hoping to bring performance into there, too, but that's a little harder with copyright issues. And then, of course, I would have brought all three in here, but it was a little heavy. For the third year in a row, in a COVID year where we were limited on what we could do and had to get really creative, we received the national recognition from the National Association of Music Merchants for Best Communities for Music Education, Tyler ISD. So, thank you for letting me give you this update. Can I answer any questions?
Great. Thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I'll make a comment if someone's thinking about a question to ask. You know, 2011, I think, when the state cut $5 billion out of public ed, a lot of, I say this every year when we have this presentation, a lot of school systems chose to not fully fund their art programs and some of their athletic programs. This district's found a way to do that. We're committed to continuing to give our students an art experience. I think in the 2017 bond, there was a slide that I presented that said that 95% of our students are involved in some type of art engagement once every three years or so. So, it's invaluable, in my opinion, that we live in this community that's able to fund the arts the way that we do, and we're able to do that in Tyler ISD and give students a well-rounded education. There's no doubt it's successful student outcomes. Being a crack mathematician, someone who reads very well, are our priorities, but giving students an experience like this is something that I think just makes us a very attractive place to send your kids to school, because we do things well. And we try to compete with these three programs that y'all, had presented to y'all today, that, and arts is one of those that we compete very well at. And I know you gave this, last thing I'm going to say, that, I know you did give this as your mid-year update, but you talked about our marching competitions as well.
Yes.
You know, marching bands are big in East Texas, and we were certainly proud to go over to Carthage.
We cannot wait to get those new uniforms on the field.
That's right. Yeah, we performed well in blue jeans last year, and blue jeans and t-shirts, both, I think, did Tyler High wear their uniforms? Were they marching in blue jeans and t-shirts?
No, they had a windsuit uniform.
That's right. Okay, so, or a warm-up suit. But it was a neat night to go over there. Stuart Byrd was doing play-by-play for K-Gas Radio at the marching contest in Pinole County at Bulldog Stadium. So, only in East Texas we get play-by-play of the marching contest, as important as it is as a football game on Friday night. So.
It is important.
It is. And so, we're excited about it, being able to get back in those uniforms, but we had a good year. Can't say enough about the arts and what you've been able to do, Sandra, Sandy. And I think whenever you got hired here, you said, what do you want from me? I said, we have got to compete extremely well in the visual arts. I said, those band directors, we hire good band directors. Stay out of their way, and you have.
I've tried.
And they've done a really good job in a very challenging year as well, so.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Okay, well, thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
Get a workout lifting all those trophies. Okay, we have a safety and security update, next.
Agent Jeff Millslegel will provide the safety and security update. We asked him to do this once a semester. Some of the stuff may sound a little redundant, but he always tries to find new things to bring up today, and I think he's going to be able to do that. Three years ago or so, how many, are you in your third year, about to begin your third year?
No, second.
About to begin your second year. Okay, so, just two years ago, this board decided to hire a safety and security director aside our chief of police. The chief of police has very specific responsibilities and duties to conduct every day. Agent Millslegel has come alongside after his retirement from the FBI to do things that matter to us in regard to the safety and security of our students, as, you know, the world's changed a little bit. And he's been, he's a little bit more flexible in his job description to be able to handle some things that we need handled outside of our police force. Agent Millslegel?
Thank you, board, Dr. Crawford, Ms. Orr, for the opportunity. I was here in April, but a number of things have happened since then, and I want to thank the board for one that we'll show highlight here in a second. We've added cameras at Griffin, Bell, Caldwell Auditorium, so tonight during the graduation for summer school, we'll watch you on camera, too. Career Technology Center had additional cameras in transportation. Transportation has moved, so we've installed three new card access doors there. They will be finished this Saturday. They're going to work Friday and Saturday to get this done, so it is safe and secure. The biggest thing is, we had an operations plan that was 564 pages. It's been rewritten. It's now 63 pages with a dozen annexes for specific things. I know none of you have probably ever read the 564 pages. It was awful, but we got through it, and we're where we need to be. I want to thank the board for approving last board meeting, the new bus camera system. The cameras have been ordered. We're meeting with the vendor in two weeks to start the rollout, doing 10 buses at a time. It's going to take some time, and we're waiting on some chips on some of the cameras, but we're going from a couple of cameras to six. So, we'll have front, back, side, and then three inside the bus, in case anything happens. For the board, in the evening time, we're redoing the lighting in the back of the parking lot. The PO has been issued. We've met with the contractor, Mr. Loper and I, and we're going to improve that. We're still negotiating with the city and Encore over the parking lot on the west and south side of Rose Stadium. It's pretty dark there. We've improved where East Texas Fair is, but that's going to take some time. I got with Greg Priest. Our concerns were, we're using all these new beautiful fields that are two high schools and our middle schools, and we do not have a warning system like we have for lightning at Mike Carter Field and at Rose Stadium. So, I've got some bids out with that, so I'll be probably coming back to the board once those numbers come in, and that way, we have it at all of our campuses for an outdoor warning system. Mike Carter Field, we're in the process of improving the lights. Again, I have to deal with the city and Encore, and it's kind of a struggle. We had an incident earlier this year on May the 5th, Cinco de Mayo, we had 200 cars show up and start doing donuts at the CTC parking lot at 9 o'clock. When law enforcement responded, within two minutes, every vehicle got out of that parking lot and scattered to the wind. Dr. Crawford asked Mr. Loper and myself to look into it. We did, but it's almost whack-a-mole. If we put a fence all the way around that, and it's very expensive, they're going to go somewhere else. So, we're looking at barriers in the parking lots. And last but not least, in the security aspect, we have school safety audits will be done in the next week or two at our two new high schools. They've allowed us to wait until they've been finished, and they're dedicated this next weekend. So, we'll be doing that. Usually, I have next to me, Dr. Jones. She is no longer with the district. She does the school threat assessments. And on the last slide, I met with Ms. Dykman and Ms. Anderson, who's going to be taking over her responsibilities, and we're going to roll out Crisis Go and Training beginning next week. And so, that's kind of the update that I have, and any questions, I'm here to answer them for you.
Okay, thank you for your report. Does anybody have any questions for Agent Millslegel or comments?
Thank you.
Well, thank you. We appreciate what you do. Okay, we have a budget update for '21 and '22. Texas school systems are required to go through a process in regard to budget. Ms. Bjork has already had a couple of opportunities with the board in regard to budget. As we get closer to the actual adoption of the budget here in the middle of this month, this is one of those days to where she presents to the board and has some actions for y'all to take in regard to some calendar and some other approvals that need to happen per Texas statute and the budget process. Ms. Bjork?
Good morning. I don't really have much different from what I presented before, because it's pretty status quo, but there was a slight decrease in our budget, or there's going to be. And our funding is 61% local, 37% state, and 2% federal for the general fund. When we got our final property values, they were 3.1% increase. When I first presented, it was 5%, but they went down to 3.1%. And we're limited to 2.5%, so it really doesn't matter. The state will reduce our tax rate to where we only see 2.5%. And so, because of that, our tax rate was set with a half a penny decrease, and then we are decreasing our debt service tax rate a penny, so we'll have a total of a penny and a half decrease in the tax rate from $1,3041 to $1,2891. So, it's down below $130 now. As far as the budget goes, we are about 83% in payroll. We increased teacher base to $48,750, and other teachers, all the other teachers got a resulting increase when we bumped up the base. All other employees received 3% of the midpoint, and then the bus drivers, we raised $18 per hour for the base. We were able to, the raises cost about $5.5 million, and the way we were able to accomplish that with no increase in the budget was, we had budgeted a $3.6 million stop in last year, so that went away. And then we moved $2 million for purchasing one-to-one devices into SRF funds. So, that's how we were able to accomplish the raise for this next year with no change to the budget. In fact, it went down about $318,000. So, that's really all I have on the budget, unless you have any questions about what's in the packet. I went through it and just did little summaries on it.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mrs. Bjork? Does anybody have any questions for Mrs. Bjork?
I mean, my only, uh, comment is I'm happy, and I know we're about to talk about it a little bit more, but always good to be able to decrease the tax rate for the community, penny and a half.
And we lowered debt service a penny, but we're still gonna early pay around $8 million in addition to the regular debt.
And I know over the, over the course of the last several years, I, I know that, you know, Dusty will come up and tell us and we've, uh, refinanced debt and everything like that, and I know we've saved, uh, tens of millions of dollars over the course of those bonds, and, uh, that's always something that I'm proud of for the citizens of Tyler, so.
Tasha, did we, did we reduce the debt service side last year?
Yes, a penny last year.
A penny last year.
And a penny this year.
So, we're two down. Now, the year before that, we didn't, we hadn't touched, we didn't touch it before last year, right?
No. And last year, we paid off $7 million early. This year, we're gonna do eight.
So, we, for the high schools, the community approved them, 83% yes, 17% against to increase the tax rate back then, three cents. So, that was 2017. So, since 2017, we've been able to go back down two more pennies on the debt service side. So, we're almost there on the increase that we saw, tax rate increase at least, not invaluations, obviously, um, but at least the district being able to, to get back down. We, we kind of predicted that because of the trends and things that have been going so well in Smith County and in Tyler specifically, that we're gonna be able to get close to that. So, possibly by next year, um, we'll, we'll be able to say that we saw those three cents and then we got back down to, on the debt service side to what we were before we even passed that bond, right?
And still being fairly aggressive with attacking that, that debt.
Absolutely.
The only other thing I, I noticed is that 2% federal, I, I do remember it, you know, at least since I've been on the Board, usually it's around 3%. Has that, has that decreased over the last?
This is just the general fund portion, not all the grants.
Okay.
The grants are like 22, 3 million plus ESER. So, it's mainly our SARS revenue, which is around 1.5 million.
Yeah.
And then we have, we earn indirect cost revenue off our federal grants.
Right.
Which we get to put in the general fund to help offset the cost of paying the bills and payroll and that type of thing.
Okay.
So.
Well, good deal. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
One last thing before you leave, um, talk about ESER II.
Okay.
The Board, so we, most of the stuff we presented to them, all of the stuff we presented at this point is ESER III.
Right.
Remember that was, you get to access ESER III funding before you access ESER II. The legislature kind of put a hold on ESER II. ESER I was to make us whole last year, and then they passed ESER II, which had a lot of, uh, loose interpretation for the states to interpret. This was still underneath, uh, right during the transition from the Trump administration to the Biden administration and the switches in Congress. So, the new Congress and the Biden administration, uh, pretty much targeted with purpose on what you could and, could and could not do with ESER III. The state realized that and said, "Okay, we can go in and release those ESER III fund, funds to pay for the pandemic response." Y'all know what we're spending our, those on, and a lot of it's instructional inside the classrooms. Now ESER II is available. Just give the Board a brief synopsis about what ESER II looks like.
Okay, ESER II is around 19 million. ESER III is 44, and we now have access to the whole 44 million on ESER III. But ESER II, the state has the ability, because they held us harmless for our ADA this year, which we were about 750 short on ADA, that the dollar amount that is, is around 5 million for us. So, 5 million of the ESER II money will be removed from our state funding for 2021. They're just gonna drop what we, they were gonna hold us harmless, so we have to reduce our budget in 2021 by around $5 million, but we can move expenditures into ESER II because they're gonna give us the 5 million there, which I'm not, I don't know that we'll have to move that much. I think we're gonna be okay. So, we'll probably have access to the whole 19 million for whatever we need. And for that 19 million, it's really the same rules as ESER III, but you have some, if you put payroll in there, it's not subject to TRS and, in ESER III it is. It's really some different rules like that, but as far as your uses, it's the same thing. But one thing we are focusing on for this is our HVAC updates because that is allowable for, to have the ionization, and you have to replace them. For, some of them we can repair, we can just add it, but some of them are really old, like our first bond in '05. Those schools need totally updating, so we'll be able to replace a lot of the HVAC in those and not have to touch our preventive maintenance. So, that's kind of where we're going with that because it's, it's, with some of the restrictions, you, there's only so much you can spend in there on people, and we thought we could do buses, but that's not right, you know, unless you're adding to your fleet, not just replacing, so.
We thought those bus cameras may qualify too, but they wouldn't qualify. And I said, "Well, how do you contact trace on a bus for mitigation"?
Yes.
You know, so anyways, there's a lot of semantics that you gotta play with on that. And I guess it got held up, ESER II got held up for as long as it did because the state was really considering a lot of supplanting, like they're able to do a little bit of, but I think they were gonna take the whole thing and supplant to take care of, care of it.
Right, they were trying to, and
Yeah.
We're not gonna know for sure until September how much we've, are losing on that, but I'm estimating around $5 million.
Now, have they appropriated that, have they, on ESER II? Have they gone ahead and?
Well, they have to.
It's accessible at, with TEA, right?
I believe so, except they're waiting to see how much is supplanting.
Yeah, but I think that's in negotiations with the feds. I think that that actually was earmarked and approved in the, the regular legislative session.
We don't have a date yet where we have to file for that yet.
Yeah, okay. I, I don't think that that's part of some of the ESER funding that's being held up that they were gonna look at in special session, is what I'm asking, right?
Oh, I, I.
I think it's already in TEA.
It is.
Because I know they were wanting to hire more nurses in the hospitals, and because of everything that's going on in Austin right now, they can't get out there and appropriate those dollars to hire more nurses. That's what I heard. So, I just, if you're here, if you're worried about all that stuff and you keep up with that, I think this money you're talking about is going to be available without having to go through a legislative session.
Yes.
Okay.
The 19 million, yes.
Okay.
For anybody who's watching that has never heard, ESER, those are emergency relief funds that were appropriated, uh, to school districts for, for COVID relief last year, and that stuff we're just accessing, and there are strings attached.
Yes.
There are, and we're trying, you know, uh, ESER III obviously is a lot of classroom stuff, but now we've kind of turned our attention, how can we alleviate some of the strain on the local dollars, you know, and, and being able to extend that preventive maintenance funding as opposed to paying for the HVAC systems that are coming due almost 20 years from, almost 20 years ago? That's kind of our strategy with ESER II.
We have to turn those in and have them approved.
But we're not trying to buy more people is, is what I'm, yeah, out of it. I mean, it's, it's, there's gonna come a day.
Might be a few here and there.
Yeah, there's gonna come a day to where some of the stuff that we did do for this, for the interventions for the next three years, we'll have to have some finesse and some strategy on in regard to that because we certainly don't wanna be overstaffed. We learned that lesson back in 2011.
Right, and most of our positions. Yeah, most of the positions were just new, so they're mainly teaching.
Right.
And so, we'll be able to absorb those back in the vacancies and that type of thing.
Sure, but the amount is what I'm, the position creep can't, can't be sustainable over time. That's, you know, that's what districts learned in 2009, 2011. Even us, we had a little bit of that from the stimulus that was provided at that time. We kind of held on to heavy staffing and curriculum instruction, so we'll be very cognizant of that when we get to budget in 2024.
Four.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions or comments? Thank you for that presentation. We do have some action items, uh, one of which is to consider the approval of a board meeting date for the purpose of adopting the budget and the proposed lower tax rate.
Now, we're required to adopt the date, which is August 23rd, and then approve the tax rate that will be published in the paper tomorrow. You can exceed that at any point after, after it's published, you can go under it, but cannot exceed it. So, it will run in the paper tomorrow for $1,2891.
Okay. Do I have a, a motion? We'll take it one at a time, but do I have a motion to approve the date of the, uh, setting the tax rate?
Mr. Washman, I move that we approve the date of August 23rd for adopting, uh, the budget.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Eyes have it and the motion carries. Our meeting will be August 23rd for the purpose of adopting the budget and the tax rate. And then next, we have, uh, consider approval of the proposed budget and expenditures for the state, uh, convinced a tour. Oh.
I move that we approve the, uh, tax rate of 1.2891.
In the publication.
That will be published.
Right. Yeah.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
He's done that a few times.
Yeah, motion carries.
Eighteen years' worth of it.
All right, good job, Mr. Bergerfield. Okay, and so that was item A, right? Moving on to, did we do B? Sorry. Did we get A and B in there?
No. That's the only action.
All right. Okay.
Okay, the next one is on state comp ed.
Okay, here we go.
We receive about 24 million, but we only have to spend 11.8 of it on true state comp ed expenditures, and we're required by law to adopt this budget before we adopt the general fund budget. And so, this is just a summary of what we spent on it for 2021 and 21, 22, and there's really not much difference.
Okay, any discussion before I entertain a motion on item B? All right, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion on item B.
I move that we approve item B.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, eyes have it and the motion carries. Okay, well, now we will go into executive session and, uh, then we will reconvene later.